Solidarity forever! For the union we must hold strong!
Men and members of the committee, on the review of the 1999 constitution, and other distinguished senators, heads of state, and other stakeholders and members of the public, I remain confident at this time, representing the Nigerian Labour Congress, Akwabom State Council. The Nigerian Labour Congress in Nigeria generally received and noticed that there is a bill for an act to alter the provisions of the Constitution of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, 1999, to transfer labour, industrial relations, industrial disputes, and minimum wage from the exclusive legislative list to the concurrent legislative list, and for related matters. And in view of this submission, we are saying no to be removed. And the grounds for our rejection of the bill by the workers of Nigeria and the majority of Nigerians include the fact that the removal of labour provisions from the exclusive to the legislative list would void the national minimum wage system, which Nigeria signed up to through the ratification of June 16, 1961, of the International Labour Organisation, ILO, Minimum Wage Fixing Missionary Convention Number 026. This will open the gate to slave wages across Nigeria. Furthermore, the removal of labour provisions would allow many state governors, who already violate many laws, to internalise the abuse of workers' fundamental rights. Already, many state governments have shown such traits with the prescription of trade unions, even when trade unions are in the exclusive list. Little is left to imagination about what would happen if labour provisions is transferred to concurrents list. This is the reason Nigerian workers view attempts at removing the labour provisions from the exclusive to the concurrent list as an existential threat against trade unions and equitable industrial relations in Nigeria. Nigerian workers are prepared to resist this internal colonialism with the last drop of their blood. We resisted this before, and we will resist it again and again. The Nigerian Labour Congress has also considered the other issues prioritised in this cycle of constitution review. By the 10th National Assembly, our position remains quite consistent on most of the issues. On electoral reform, we have called for a holistic and genuine implementation of the Les Tchotis Wiasslet Electoral Reform Committee. The increasing anomalies, brigadage, criminality, acrimony, unrest, and violence that have troubled recent elections in Nigeria are a test to the deficiency of political decorum and democratic ethos by the political class. This trend has led to a serious erosion of public confidence in Nigeria's electoral process, which is a grave threat to the sustenance of our hard-won democracy. The Nigerian Labour Congress insists, as we did before, the 2007 electoral reform cycle, that the country needs an overhaul of our electoral laws now more than ever. It is in time, my still safe nine. On social, economic, cultural, and political issues, the Nigerian Labour Congress believes that it is very important for chapter two of the 1999 constitution to be made justifiable. This would be the fundamental of restoring citizen-centric and accountable public governance in Nigeria. Our position on judicial reforms, gender equity, management of public revenue, the security architecture, and strengthening the independence of oversight institutions and the different tiers of government are all aimed at building a rules-based democratic state rooted in the principles of freedom, civic responsibility, mutual respect, and pursuit of the common good. We hope that these aspirations are met by the current effort by the 10th National Assembly to review and possibly amend the relevant provisions of the 1999 constitution of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. The struggle continues until victory is assured. Thank you very much, the chairman.
Thank you, brother. Mr. Weto. Please celebrate the reader and the presenter. Thank you, Labor.
We have people with disabilities who intend to make a case for you and the lady who walked up, so two of you, one after the other, to listen to you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, distinguished senators, honourable members of the State House and National Assembly, our royal fathers and traditional leaders here present, ladies and men. I am here representing a network of women with disabilities in Akwabom State as state coordinators, on the special seat for women with disabilities, under the reserve seat for Women Bill. On behalf of millions of Nigerian women living with disabilities, women who are too often overlooked, unheard and underrepresented, I rise to present a simple but powerful demand: the full political inclusion of women with disabilities under the reserve seat for Women Bill. Through clearly defined and protected reserve seats in governance, a bold step toward a more inclusive, representative, and equitable democracy. Representation is not charity; it is justice. It is our constitutional right to have a seat at the table where decisions affecting our lives are made. Without women with disabilities in these spaces, our priorities, challenges, and dreams are silenced. Section 42 of the Constitution forbids discrimination and deprivation. Yet, women with disabilities are systematically deprived of political representation. Not because they lack merit, but because the system is not designed for their inclusion. In this conference today, we are emphasising the urgent need for inclusive political frameworks that reflect Nigeria's gender and ability diversity through political party reforms that mandate inclusion of women with disabilities in leadership and candidate selection. Accessible political spaces from tented venues to voting centres. Disability inclusive.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Yes, we appreciate your reverence on the excellency, the Senate President, and also the Deputy Governor of Akwabom State. Thank you, let's take advantage of our time. Thank you. Right back. So, let's go on to the next question.
Ababa Abubio, GCON, President of the Senate, Acha Maasal-Salzona. He is not here alone. He's been accompanied by the dynamic and heroic Democratic Party of Akwabom State, the Deputy Senator, Dr. Akoni Yaranyi, who plays the rite. Your Excellency, the Senate President, before your arrival, this is the Senator, Senator Dixon, I felt with your very remarks and prayers. I need to ask that we continue with the presentation. A lot of presentations have been made, and some were reserved until your arrival. And now that you've arrived, I think I will still swing back. Your Excellency, Senator Dixon, former governor of Bayes State, and Chairman Karkus.
To guide him, to hit the gas, and I will hit this brake. Your Excellency, President of the Senate, of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, and Chairman of the National Assembly. My dear distinguished committee, our dear colleague, the Excellency, the Deputy Governor of this great state. Let me rest on the already established order protocol. Your Excellency, President of the Senate, on behalf of your colleagues, members of our caucus, which has you as President of the Senate, and on behalf of all our leaders, traditional rulers, women leaders, youth leaders, opinion holders, and everybody from far and wide in the South-South here, assembled here in this historic state and in this city on the Welcome You. And join all of them, we all of them, we join all of them to receive you, to join us. Your Excellency, we have explained to them you have very important matters of state to attend to. And with the Governor, you will come here, now you are here with the Deputy Governor, and he whispered to me that she is representing the Governor, but that the Governor is also on his way here. You have asked that a Chairman of his caucus should on our behalf continue or start the deliberations, and we've been doing so. But we skipped the formal opening ceremonies. Your Mark and that of his Excellency, the Governor, we have taken a number of amendments, and by consensus, we also decided to set down some amendments, particularly the memoranda following for different state creation proposals until you were with us. And now you are here. With them, with the very passionate case that all our women leaders, leaders of our nation in the homeland also made, about having a special case, a special seat, a special seat for women. But knowing that the Senate and the National Assembly that you lead is also very sensitive and threatening, you are here, some of them would like to also hear from you in that meeting. And without prejudice to all that we will raise and discuss amongst ourselves, at this point, the President of the Senate, I would like to invite you, now that we have taken the national anthem signalling the formal commencement of these proceedings, for you to take the floor and make your formal remarks. Sorry?
Uncommon performing Senate President? His Excellency, distinguished Senator Dr. Obut Ababio, GCON, the Senate President of the 10th Assembly. Permit me to acknowledge the Chairman of this noble committee, his Excellency, Seraki Dixon. My own brother, we were together in the 9th Assembly, and he continued with the good work that he is doing. God bless you, sir. Please permit me to acknowledge all the distinguished senators here present, especially the senators of the South-South region, and particularly my own senator representing me, the distinguished Senator Ekong Samson. Members of the House of Assembly, leaders of thought and stakeholders, our traditional revered rulers, all the groups here present, particularly the women group. Ladies and gentlemen, I once again salute all of us seated here. I'm very impressed to see this sea of folks here coming in to participate, to contribute, and state what bothers you. It shows the concern. So I want to welcome you. I stand here today, not as the Deputy Governor alone. I'm standing here to represent a grandson of Akwabom State, a gift to Akwabom State in a season like this, a man of peace, the best performing governor in Nigeria, Pastor Umo Basi Enno, whose grandfather is the Senate President. The governor is out of the state on his way returning. Because of the respect and honour he has for this committee and for his grandfather, he had asked me to come ahead of him as the John the Baptist. If it lands, if we are still here, he will come straight because he holds the committee and what is going on here in a very high exime. So, your Excellency, our Father, Leader, your Son, your Governor, says I should please let you know that he respects and values what is going on here and that he will be with you. I have spoken with you. God bless you. I came here with a written remark, brief remark, from the Governor of Akwabom State, Pastor Umo Basi Enno. The voice you'll be hearing is that of the distinguished Senator, Akoni Yaranyi, the Deputy Governor, but the content of this remark is from the Governor of Akwabom State. So permit me to read the speech. I bring one, I bring you one greeting of the people of Akwabom State to this great gathering. The people of Akwabom State are happy that this session is holding here. So, I stand again on behalf of his Excellency, the Governor, and the good people of Akwabom State to say your welcome. We are honoured and deeply pleased to welcome you all from across the six constituent states of the South-South geopolitical zone to this remarkable constitutional engagement. It is beyond half a distance that this significant event is holding here in the ancient city of Ikotekevene, the rapture city, the cradle of local government administration, and the oldest local government area in Nigeria. History also bears witness that our forebears were in the vanguard of agitation for the creation of states in Nigeria. This venue is therefore a symbol of the truth that the earnest yearning for true federalism in which power evolves from the centre to the people has a spiritual, historic, and physiological home in Akwabom State and in the South-South region of Nigeria. This zonal public hearing is not a mere procedural stop in legislative activity. It is, in truth, an important moment in our democratic journey. The scores of constitutional alteration bills across 13 thematic areas, painstakingly curated by the Senate Committee on the Review of the 1999 Constitution, speak to some of the most urgent and persistent questions about the structure, efficiency, equity, and future of our federal union. These themes resonate deeply with the yearnings of the people of the South-South. Indeed, they made long-standing calls from this region for a more just, responsive, and restructured Nigeria, where every federating unit can flourish, contribute meaningfully, and feel a sense of belonging. Here, in the South-South, we look to this exercise not just with interest, but with hope. Hope that this constitutional review process will, far from being just another talk show, move us closer to a federation that works for all, protects the rights of every citizen, empowers communities, and unlocks the full potential of states. However, while driving reforms, we should be cautious so as not to create breathing ground for conflicts and chaos at the grassroots. We commend the 10th Senate of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, ably led by his Excellency, the distinguished Senator Gotwill Obut Ababio, GCON, a great and proud son of the soil, for placing premium on this process and for ensuring that every zone has a seat at the table. We particularly appreciate the clear intent to make the anticipated reforms citizen-driven, participatory, and transparent. Values that lie at the heart of democracy. The government of Akwabom State will send afternoon a written position paper as the short notice for this event did not provide us time for proper consultation. To all participants, we urge you to speak boldly, listen attentively, and engage constructively. The imputes we make today is not just for our benefit, but for generations to come. Let us seize this moment to shape a more perfect union. On this note, and on behalf of the good people of Akwabom State, I once more welcome you to this gathering. Before I step down, permit me, as a woman standing for the women's law in Akwabom State, that Akwabom State Governor is a gender-friendly governor, the Senate President, our Father is a gender-friendly Father, Leader. He is always there to support the women's cause. And so... And so, the reserve seats for the women bill.
So let me recognize His Excellency, the Governor of Akwabom State and my dear brother, the peace-loving Governor, the very humble Governor, the very performing Governor, the very admirable Governor. And of course, the latest entrant into the ruling party, the APC Governor of Akwabom State Pastor Umar Enno. I greet you and I greet your representative. I must say that the Chairman of Education, my dear brother Siraki Dixon, former Governor himself of Bayasa State and a great voice of the Jor Nation. I salute you, sir. And of course, my dear colleagues who are here in their numbers. Surprisingly, I thought many of you would be in a do because of the event we also have tomorrow. But I acknowledge the fact that the South-South for now is an art mixture of all political parties. But that does not stop you from becoming one tomorrow. I hope somebody is hearing me. I want to acknowledge my brother Senator Davinone, I want to acknowledge my other brothers. And of course, my brother Benson Agadaga. He's from Bayasa State. My other brother Benson Kungue is from Bayasa State. And my other younger brother, His Excellency, sorry, I almost missed it. The Senegal Senator, the Senegal Senator Asikwe Kweyong, I will put in trouble, so don't be afraid. And sitting next to the Senegal Senator Dixon, I haven't seen the face. Okay, that is the Senegal Senator Icon Sampson of Akwabom State. And then, of course, one of our good neighbors, the Senegal, the Senegal Senator Ned Woko of Bayasa State. And the Senegal Senator, a former speaker, Anekan Bassey, a member of this company. If I don't recognize any other person, I've used a few people here to recognize the senators. Senator Oshumole makes his flight, but he's on the way. He will still land in this occasion. I've been in touch with His Excellency Governor Umar Enno and I told him, so that we don't keep you for too long today, let your deputy read your address, but still come. So he's on his way, he will still join us. That is to underscore the importance of this gathering. And so Oshumole will still join us also. And of course, any other person that is not here, I believe is represented in words because we have said you should submit your memorandum. I don't know whether we have all done that. So let me also use our dear sister Anamazon, a former, this, a former dad and one of the longest women political leaders in Nigeria. The Senegal Senator Florence Itagewa, commander of the Order of the Niger. To recognize all our non-serving senators who are here today. Of course, Ambassador Tuyu, you are the Nigerian ambassador to Ethiopia and also the OAU, African Union. So from you, we now recognize all our foreign ministers, women ministers, women ambassadors and all others. Then most especially our very traditional rulers who are here in their numbers. I want to pay tribute to all of you. You turn up at very short notice because of the importance of ensuring that we create a space in the Nigerian Constitution for the traditional institution. Then I look around and I see the youths. The youths, I want to tell you just that when I was young, we were told that you must respect your elders so that your days will belong on earth. So I did respect my elders. And then when I became old, I was told that you must respect the youths because they are the leaders of tomorrow. So you can see you are lucky. For me, in between, as a youth, I did not have that respect because I had to respect my elders. Then now as an elder, I don't even have to respect because I have to respect the youths because they are the leaders of tomorrow. So I lost it out. So greatest Nigerian youths, greatest Boza, greatest Papa. I want to speak. I want to speak. I want to say. I love you all. So let me welcome all of us to this occasion and to say that I'm grateful that we are able to meet and we're able to submit our various memoranda and we are able to also have a say in the coming constitutional amendment. Our traditional rulers, I have noticed even the Paramanda of our back, a first-grade Paramanda in Akwabom State. And I know that a lot of other traditional rulers are here, including the Oku Ibo Hivivu and all that. Oh, the Paramanda of Ikon and other traditional rulers. I acknowledge all of you. Now, I was also with the Dean of Agbo at their embassy when the US celebrated their independence and I'm sure he has sent representatives here. So they are all in support of what we are doing here today. Then some of my colleagues that are not here, even not the senators, I'm talking about the governors. I was assisting myself, a part of them. They've sent in their own apologies and also their recommendations of what they think the Nigerian Constitution should be. So from the point of view of the Senate President who presides over the joint session of the National Assembly, he also lets you know that this is our son. This one is our own. So now we be this. There is no way we can do this thing without taking care of ourselves, am I right? So you don't have any problem. Thank God. This exercise is happening at a time after forty-five, forty-six years. This is the first time Nigeria has finally never seen the seat, the position of number three citizen to the South-South. And I will thank Nigeria. So I bring you one greetings from President Bola Ametunibu, D.C. F.A., who made this possible through his dogged political and zagashous attitude. So I think we, the South-South, will remain eternally grateful. And we want to urge, as you are doing this, maybe it should be rotational to show that we don't wait for more than forty-five years to come again to this position. I don't know whether you are getting the point. So I also noted all the placards I saw from outside. The people outside are more than the people inside. So and as soon as they saw me, they brought out their placards and said, I support women. But you are showing me, you said I support reserved seats for women. You should actually write and tell me, support reserved seats for women. But you are saying you support. So you want to know whether I support? And then I'll go into my address. I'm deeply honored. I'm deeply honored to welcome all of you to this historic gathering in the heart of the Rafia City in Akwabom State, a town called Ikotekwene, very proud symbol of democratic residence for the South-South region. The Deputy Governor, through the Governor, has already stated the significance of coming to this small town. We would have been at Uyu, but the hotel that we are supposed to use, the Lomennadian Hotel with eighteen pool golf courts there, is under major renovation. So that was why we moved here. I hope you didn't find it too difficult to get here. Because one thing about Akwabom is the fact that the roads are as if you are flying in New York. Can somebody say amen to the truth? Amen, amen. So I will welcome you, the state that believes in a serious democratic dividend. Okay. Okay, they are riding. Come like this, come like this. I want to welcome a combat. Who is that? I welcome Comrade Adam Oshumole, two-time Governor, of the Dusse and former Labor President of Nigeria. Now, I told him to come in his uniform to underscore the fact that Labor is interested in this exercise of ensuring the amendment of the Constitution. But I also told you that your khaki is not the same khaki that others wear. You've changed it, okay, welcome. Please take a seat. I had announced your, yes, I had announced. I announced that you missed your flight, but that you still make it. So having said that, Ikotekwene that you are all seeing holds a very special place in Nigerian administrative history. This place was the first, it was the first local government experimentation in Nigeria. Through the British, we can say that Ikotekwene is almost like the cradle. Mr. President of the Senate, I won't let you comment on that. As Chairman of this session, I've already ruled that this seat is not vacant for now. So you'll be surprised that I did not even notice. So this was the first experimental local government administration in Nigeria. And now it is said to take the place of the renewed vision for participative leadership, inclusive development and the democratic excellence at this regional level that we are trying to start today. So today's event is not merely a formality by the Senator of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. It is a democratic right, a solemn moment in which the people, not politicians alone, speak into the soul of our nation. It is an affirmation that in a democracy, every voice counts, just like every vote counts. So let us not forget that democracy is a work in progress. Some people will say we already have an amended constitution. I would disagree that democracy is a work in progress. We must continue to tinker with it until we get it right to the satisfaction of all. So for me, no constitution is eternal in its form, in its original form. Even the American Constitution had to be amended. And no democracy is perfect because even man himself is not perfect. But it is in our collective pursuit of perfection that more perfect union can bring about true beauty of democracy. That's where democracy lies. Therefore, the review of the Constitution is not a sign of weakness, but it is a sign of strength. It is not a complaint against the past, but it is rather a commitment to the future. We are men not to abandon, but to realign, to adopt our national charter to the changing realities, to the dreams and demands of the good people of Nigeria and particularly the demands of the times. Every Nigerian is a stakeholder in Nigeria's democracy. This public hearing is a testament to the Senate's unwavering belief that truth emerges not from silence, but from dialogue, not from monologue, but from the aggregation of honest opinions. That is why we are here. Not as party men, where I'm correcting that we had supported the APC, even though I know every Nigerian wants a APC bed. I'm just correcting it. So like I said, that we are not here as party men and women, but we are here as patriots, not as political actors, but as nation builders. The demand of this moment is that we speak freely and boldly, speak freely and boldly, even though yesterday somebody was saying on television that yes, in Nigeria, they say in democracy, the freedom of speech is guaranteed. The problem is that freedom after the speech is not guaranteed. So I said, what would I do here? With the democracy, the Constitution guarantees freedom of speech. But somebody coined it and changed it and said, but freedom after speech is not guaranteed. So I'm here to tell you that freedom after speech here is also guaranteed. So let us argue passionately but reason truthfully. In this sacred moment, politics must give way to national interests. The Constitution belongs not to the elite, but to every Nigerian who wakes up each day in the hope of a better tomorrow. So my dear brothers and sisters, Amatoum in the Niger Delta region, in the South-South, in the home that produces the wealth of a nation. This is our moment. Our children are watching. Posters is listening. History is recording. We have come together not to tear down, but to build up, to construct a scaffolding of a stronger and more inclusive constitution for the Federation of Nigeria. So let me commend the tenth National Assembly for not only representing the people of Nigeria, but for redefining the legislative direction in a manner that is consultative, courageous and consensual. In just its first two years in office, the tenth Senate recorded a legislative milestone with nine hundred and eighty-three bills, introduced four hundred and seventy-seven in its first session and five hundred and six in the second session, marking overall from nineteen ninety-nine a six percent year-over-year increase. Of these, ninety-six were passed by the Senate and fifty-two have been ascended to about, in fact, now about fifty-five. Because I read three just two days ago. Fifty-five have been ascended to by Mr. President. That between June two thousand and twenty-three and then June two thousand and twenty-five. And notable among these deals I would just mention two is the Student Loans Act two thousand and twenty-four. This has approved, this has given rise to application of about five hundred thousand applications, five hundred thousand. The Student Loans Act has given life to poor and vulnerable people to achieve tertiary education, university education, something they probably would never have been able to do. This was not there in my time when we were struggling. We have also been able to pass, just few days ago, the President signed four bills at once, tax reform bills, twenty twenty-five. This is projected to help raise Nigeria's gross domestic product to about one trillion dollars. The Minimum Wage Act of twenty twenty-four raised the wage, the minimum wage to about seventy thousand. But I do know that because of inflation, we may need to raise it again. But even then, it was like double what was, what we met on ground. The Local Government's Financial Autonomy Act, the Regional Development Commission. We have created additional Regional Development Commissions, about five of them to meet up with the Northeast Development Commission, making six. This will create employment opportunities for our children and bring more developments to the grassroots. This I'm just mentioning. By the grace of God, the Senate has remained politically stable and united, fostering a cooperative but independent relationship with the executive without compromising its legislative integrity. So let us appreciate the Senate Committee on Constitution Review under the leadership of our favorable and patriotic Senate leader. under the leadership of our favorable and patriotic Senate leader. Yes, indeed. Deputy Senate President and the Senate Leader, Senator Parag Jibri and Senator Opayemi Bamelele. And my colleagues who are here, including the Chairman of the South South Forum here and all the members who are, if you look at the program, you'll see all of them. They have shown vision and diligence in sharing this national assignment. This is happening simultaneously in all the zones today, except the North West Zone, which for obvious reasons, on the demise of our elder statesman, Aladji Dantata, we had to postpone the sitting today to enable them half the three days morning and thereafter they will go into the business. So I'm happy to report that under the leadership of your son, the Senate has shown vision and diligence in sharing the national assignment given to it. The demand for the creation of more states and local government areas are just the tip of the iceberg as other issues contend for constitutional clarity. Issues such as state policing, resource control, judicial reform, gender inclusion, electoral integrity, space for traditional rulers in the constitution to have a say in the security of their environment. These are not just legislative concerns. They are the building blocks of a more just, united, and forward-looking federation. So let me also extend my appreciation to Excellency President Bola Ahmed Tunibu for his immense patriotism and the spirit of executive legislative collaboration that now underpins the reform agenda of our republic through his people-focused leadership. We are reminded that government is not a tough war, but a team effort in service to the people. My fellow Nigerians, Nigeria is poised and primed for greatness. But greatness is not inherited. It is something that you construct. You can inherit greatness. You work for greatness. I always tell people that anybody who wakes up in the morning to find himself a success was not sleeping, must have been toiling in the night while others were snoring. And the only place in the world where you see success before war is in the dictionary. That's when you see S before W. Success before war can only be found in the dictionary. As Nigerians, we must work. We must think. We must aggregate. We must collaborate. We must do everything possible. We must love one another before we can bring peace every hand or day on deck. Today and the days ahead will echo in the future that we befit to our children, a more egalitarian society. So let us deliberate with honor. Let us engage with honesty. Let us act with humility. Together, let us edge into our national memory, a constitution that does not merely describe who we are, but who we aspire to become. This is our, this is the South South. I don't need to pronounce, but I've traveled around many parliaments in the world. Women are not, women are allowed to compete with men, but women have special seats dedicated to them. Because the logic is very clear that if you build a woman, you build a home. And for you to build a home, you are building a generation. May God bless the South South part of Nigeria. May God bless our traditional rulers. I may also give you an example. When I was born, if you see a stray goat on the road, you must take it away. You must try and grab the goat so that the car will not hit it. Then you take it to the traditional father, your village share. The village share will send somebody, the town crier. And the person will go almost from home to home, asking whether somebody had missed his goat. Eventually, by evening time, the owner who had gone to the farm will come and look for the goat without seeing the goat and go straight to the village's compound and will see the goat in front. And it will be returned free of charge. But today, in the first few years when I was, just before I finished secondary school, if a goat strays near any secondary school, if it goes near any fence in a secondary school, within the next 20 minutes, it is already inside the bin and they are looking for one, paper. May God bless South South in Nigeria. And so traditional fathers, if they are relegated to the background, then it means insecurity. How come we did not have so much insecurity when the traditional fathers had a say in the constitution? Let the women go. I'm not saying women are better managers, but I know they are equal managers. And I know, I know that with this constitutional amendment, once we are able to place our women where, then we have placed our nation where. God bless the South South part of Nigeria. So Chairman, before I take my seat, just the traditional, maybe you'll hit on my behalf, you'll hit the gavel three times as I declare this South South Regional Constitutional Review Conference opened in the name of God, the Father, God the Son, and God the Holy Spirit.
Thank you very much, Excellency the President of the 10th Senate of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, Senator Dostor Gossulakabi Ojisioen. Please, can we celebrate him once more? Can we put a hand together? Can we sing for him? Can we rejoice? Can you sing? Can you celebrate him? Your Excellency, these are your women. There is no how and they will not celebrate you. Please celebrate the man of the moment. Celebrate our deceased Senator. Celebrate him. He deserves their grandfather. Thank you. Thank you, wonderful women.
Thank you very much. You see how special our women are.
We are not asking for handouts. We are demanding political will and legislative courage to reserve seats that reflect, to reserve seats that reflect the diversity and strength of Nigerian women, rural and urban, young and old, able-bodied and disabled. I speak as a woman who has lived through the twin shadows of disability and exclusion. I know what it means to be spoken about, but never to, to have policies made in my name without my input. Without us, representation is incomplete. If half of Nigeria's population is female, is female, and over 15 million Nigerians have disabilities, imagine how many voices are missing when women with disabilities are not at the table. We call on the National Assembly, State House of Assembly, and all relevant institutions to pass a special seats for women with disabilities under the Reserve Seats for Women Bill and to ensure that a clear quota is allocated for women with disabilities. To electoral bodies and political parties, we say, make your processes inclusive, accessible, and accountable. To the public and media, we say, help amplify our voices. Let history remember this moment, not as another press conference, but as a turning point where Nigerian women with disabilities refused to be invincible, when they demanded a seat not just at the table, but at every table from the Nationals Assembly to the Village Council. Now, if democracy is solely about representation, if democracy is solely about representation, it's about time we ask the question.
I think wasting the torch here present, traditional rulers, all protocols duly observed. I have come with enormous goodwill from our people, the Isoko Communities in Ndopwa East, over 40 towns and communities from Isoko. We are here to say that our position on the creation of states is this. Yes, we want Annioma State created because it's for our people, it's for our brothers. What I have been sent to say that our kit and king are the Isokos in Isoko North and Isoko South, local governments of Delta State. And it has been our endless desire to be reunited with our kit and king with whom we are contiguous. We are a minority within a minority. And our strong desire is that if we must create new states, create Annioma, fairness, equity, and transparency, as well as inclusiveness demands, that we must give a touch to the minorities within the minority. All we want is to be left to remain in Delta State. Albeit, two local governments to be created for Asse Creek and Isoka Army Local Government to be left within Delta State because these are the people whom we have cultural affinity. These are the people whom we speak the same language. We do not want to be in any other state, in any other local government other than a new local government, Isoka Army Local Government, or Asse Creek. Or at worst, let us join our brothers who are presently in Isoko North and Isoko South. That is our position. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
We have a number of them. Let's begin with Annioma. Mister Senator Woko, who do you nominate to make the case? No, wait, wait. If you have any controversy, you will speak. No, you wait, wait. I'm sharing. I'm directing the proceedings. If you have a case, we will recognize you to make your case. Okay, yes. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. You know, I'm carried for a feat.
Assistant Protocole, my name is Tony Ochita Ogana. I'm a lawyer, publisher, and I'm also a community leader. Mister Senate President, you might not remember me, but four years ago, you were in Onituba to see Kachiko. It was me that you gave the money to go and empower our people. It was me who told that wherever you go, you spread smiles on the faces of people. Now, the Annioma Nation is calling on you, sir. You are married to one of us, Mrs. Unoma Tishibo, who are calling on you to help create the sixth Ndebo State for the Annioma Nation. Now, let us be clear. What is Annioma? A stands for Anyotcha, North and South. Ndopwa, East, Ndopwa, West. I stands for Ika. O stands for Osimili. And of course, Ukwané, what is good with the Ndopwa Nation. Not many people know that Asaba was the first capital of Nigeria. Not many people know that after their inauguration in 1914, it was Annioma people that bore the brunt of the civil war. When, despite the fact that late Colonel Philip F. Young had an end over surrender, the federal troops came into Asaba, our women and men came out dancing with powder to welcome them. And what did we get in return? We got bullets. So we are calling on the 10th Assembly to help wipe the tears of the Ibo nation. We are begging that the state of Annioma should be created. Of all the zones, of all the zones in Nigeria, it is only the Ibo zone that has five states. So we are begging you, sir, to do the right thing. Finally, before I sit down, the very first request for state in 1954 was by our people. Till that state has not been created, please help stagnate Nigeria. Help give us the sixth Ndebo state. Help make Asuwajus reelection very, very easy and a working impact for Ibo nation. Give us the state. Thank you. And this is the memorandum I asked for.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Objection to the creation of Annioma State. No objection from Anyotcha. No objection from Ndopwa. No objection from Ika. No objection from Osimili. So it is carried. Do you want Annioma? Do you want Annioma? Do you want Annioma? Thank you very much. Darlo no, darlo no, darlo no.
Darlo no.
Try the one that you don't know.
Try the one I know.
Thank you very much, Senate President. Thank you. And I end by saying that the name of your wife, Mrs. Unoma, Ms. Annioma, something good, good woman, good land, good family, good heart, good state. Thank you very much, sir. I know you are a performer, you are a lawyer, and you feel the ineptity. You feel the suffering of the Ibo nation.
Thank you. We are very, we are very.
Just my team.
Thank you. I would like to nominate a traditional ruler. Yes. Traditional ruler, please take the floor. Take the floor. Take the floor. Ten minutes, I will make the case. Your Majesty, take the, take the.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Bobby Henry, Afamefne, Kikachiko, BHDS, Saturday Six. The Vice Chairman, Head Vice Chairman, Delta North, Traditional Rulers Council of Forum. We are here in large numbers, traditional rulers from the Annioma extraction. The reason being that traditional rulers in the area over the years, if you are to go through the historical antecedents of the agitations, have somewhat demanded for the creation of Annioma State. Seventy-one years down the line, the agitation is still on. It is stronger. That is why we consider it necessary to be here in person and be part of this process. The bottom line is create Annioma State. And we will be happy. Our people will be free. Because living in a place where you have no identity is like you are in a one form of slavery or the other. We cannot continue at this point to remain in that position. Please, our President, the Senate President, and the members of the committee, we beg and appeal that you apply our request to create Annioma State. Thank you very much. That is a collective wish of all the traditional rulers and critical stakeholders in Annioma Nation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Your Majesty. Support of the Annioma State. Are you available now? Okay. Let them, let them just go. One minute summarize. Because we have the members who want to hear from you. Who is speaking?
I am all protocol of law. I am here to speak on behalf of the bank people. We are here to appeal that we, the bank people, should join our brothers in Annioma State. We are marginalized in a good state because we are minorities. When Delta State was created, our brothers were, 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 were assigned to Delta State. The act of people, the humanated people, the people who are Ika. But we, as the bank people, we belong to the Ika tribe. They left us in a good state. So in a good state, we are just marginalized because we are minorities. So we are here to appeal that justice should be done, that we should, they should take us to join our brothers so that we can eat with the same plate with them. It's a noble appeal. Please, help us to be in Annioma State.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Lovely. Please take a take. Correto State and the other ones here, we'll take them one by one. But at this point, all right. Good. Because the man
On behalf of Civil Society Organization, International Society for Social Justice and Human Rights.
in respect of state creation. Yes, sir. Two minutes. Mister Senate President, all protocols of the House. I stand here today not to agitate, but to affirm. Not to complain, but to correct longstanding injustice that are bothered by the federation of Nigeria in support of Anyoma State creation. As a civil society group, in the words of Martin Luther King, he said, "No life is interrelated." We are all caught up in an inescapable web of mutuality tied in a single garment of destiny. What affects one directly affects others indirectly. So the case of Anyoma people affects Nigerian Federation directly. They need justice. They need to be aligned with their people in the southeast. Their cultural values have been demated. Their history decimated. And how can we sit in a state and call ourselves members of one country while some people are being terrorized and sturdicated?
Thank you. Thank you. We are very.
Mister President, please. A minute.
No, 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 no. You are not giving us a minute. We are the ones who.
I plead with you.
No, you have made a case for Anyoma, please. Can you make room for others to come and make their own case? Thank you. Thank you. I would like to call and.
Alright. There are less, less noise, less noise. For the inspiration of Ogoja State. Ogoja State, Ogoja State. We will take pandas last. You are speaking for all of our people. You round that for everybody. After Ogoja, there's a member from Acquibum State Supreme Council of Traditional Rulers. There's also one from Karuean James, Acquibum Youth Democratic Coalition. So get ready. So this memo represents the aspiration of the Abi and Yakaw people. They are not in Ogoja State. They choose to remain in Cross River like what the Isoko people have done. So this memo and the prayers is leave Abi and Yakaw in Cross River State, but create Ogoja State.
Thank you very much. So it is the support for the creation, or that those people should be left in Cross River State? Yes. Is there any memo posed for the creation of Ogoja State? Alright. I think we need to.
Leaders, thank you very much. I rise on the fact that when we reflect on the core state movement that led to the creation of the Dang Rivers and many other states, Ogoja was the O in the clock. Up till now, over how many years now, decades now, Ogoja State has been pending. It's the oldest area of this state, of this country, the oldest province of the whole country that has not become a state. I come from the southern part of Cross River State. Ogoja is in the north. We have absolutely no problem with the creation of Ogoja State. We think it is a matter of justice. We think it is a matter of development and a matter of progress. Kalaba is six or seven hours away from Ogoja. We need it for administrative reasons and we need it for the integrated. Lastly, sir, is to say that the only surviving national park in Nigeria today is in the Cross River State. We are giving service to the climate and to the world. We need to have feedback. And don't forget, we lost Bakasi. It is time for the country to compensate us. This is the reason why Ogoja State is a minority.
Thank you very much, honorable ambassador. Well spoken.
It's coming, it's coming. The paramura is coming, please. Please give him space.
Over, over, please.
There are too many here. Disturbing issues. Calm down.
With due respect to the President of the Senate, due respect to those that exist in this city and distinguish senators who are here. Yep. I wish to present this time of Acquibum State, the creation of Acquibum State, Traditional Rulers Council. Here come Acquibum State Supreme Council of Traditional Rulers. The memorandum of on the position of Acquibum State Supreme Council of Traditional Rulers. Presented by Ukoba Isbita Maestri, the doctor, the deputy attorney, the paramunda of the local government. Submitted to the Senate panel on the creation, policing, gender equality and so on. Praying, no, 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 no. It's not praying, but please summarize it, sir. Okay.
Rest of the two minutes.
Okay. We are going to speak on security. The council acknowledged the role of traditional rulers in the grassroots security and recommends the decentralization of the security architecture of the country by the formation of state and regional security outfit, particularly the police force. The amendment of the section two, one, four of the 1999 constitution, which stipulates that, quote, "No other police force shall be established," unquote, to give room for establishment of the state and regional police force to cater for the peculiarities of each region while also attending to national security concerns, including threats like instability, crisis and armed conflict. South-South Development Commission. The council supports the creation of the agency, but encourages the strengthening of the agency financially to deliver strategic goals. Infrastructure. The council urges the provision of critical infrastructure, particularly the rehabilitation and reconstruction of federal roads, including the Kalaba Itu Road. The completion of East-West Road and the construction of a railway linking the sixth state of the South-South region. Legal framework for traditional rulers. The council further recommends the recognition of the role of traditional rulers in governance by the review of the 1999 constitution, to provide roles of the traditional rulers in matters involving religion, culture, security, justice and ancillary matters. The constitution should provide for states to enact laws to cater for specific peculiar matters relating to traditional rulers in the state. Furthermore, the leadership of State Council of Chiefs should be recognized by the constitution as amended of the Council of State as previously obtainable in others except in the 1999 constitution. Recommendations of the National Council of Traditional Rulers and South-South Monarch Forum hereby attach for Easy Reverend, Ibonde Seport. In view of the relevance of Ibonde Seport to the strategic economic renaissance of Acquibum State, council deeply appreciate the federal government for our effort and urges the speedy actualization of the project in the state. Conclusion. The adoption of the foregoing recommendation especially as articulated by both the National Council of Traditional Rulers of Nigeria and the South-South Monarchs Forum will reflect the desires of the Supreme Council of Traditional Rulers in Acquibum State and beyond. Thank you. Thank you very much. And act for the benefit and the future of this great country. Thank you. Doctor, can we help?
And the rest of the senators that are here, I stand on the existing protocols to present our position. We are Ithum Ibole Ibo. This is the conglomerate of the majority ethnic group of Acquibum State, covering sixteen local governments, and is run as an advisory council, a leadership council, and it comprises all the traditional rulers of the sixteen local governments. I'm therefore privileged and honored to present the consensus position of the entire Igbo.
Finalist, sir. I'd like to point out that. I'd like to point out that Acquibum is suppressed in the.
So the way they are. People will make their case, or try not to, to suit this.
Okay.
Congratulations, the most distinguished senator, the editor of Anyoma State. It has shown that your dreams and your strides cannot be erased. You are the ambassador of the youth, the youth ambassador. The lion of Anyoma. Are they lying for you?
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, gentlemen. Nice of another presentation, please. Nice of another place. Please, only the presenter.
Alright. Aloha. Eh, what do I have, I like, give me, eh, baby, it's an award. I found the issue right next to the video, so we're still in the city. I'll be outta a bank. Eh, Acquibum State. Eh, I'm not even one, I caught it, I mean. Eh, yeah. Where did in a public hearing? The state which only a pretty, which is Anyoma State, can watch on a, into. So I'm here with my subjects, the market, I'm a share the market, or the only day, I can, oh, my law. It's not talk. Eh, it maybe. Wow, eh, so I see drive a stop. Eh, addition, where's all include a bank? Where's all include a bank in Anyoma State, which only a pretty. My enemy, a bank, eh, oh. Oh, missy, yeah, where no, a gym, eh, bank, no, a, a lot more, no, a gym. Eh, do I create, eh, during bend, eh, do I create, eh, do I better? Yeah, who are separate, eh, gym, eh, no, she. So, eh, banking, eh, gym, eh, why, eh, no, eh, oh, she. So, eh, really, eh, when you're so, eh, my, eh, gym, eh, no, she. You're so already the same house. Eh, eh, who is sitting, eh, she's in, eh, come. So, eh, I can, eh, pretty today. Eh, 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 I caught it, eh, eh. Eh, do eh, why eh, it cut up a name? I've got, we eh, go eh, pack eh, eh, in eh, Anyama State, place eh, which on eh, eh.
Oh, you make this, eh.